Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, December 6, 2023, and it is about 1 o'clock. We are ready to begin the council time agenda with Clark County Council of Washington. I'm going to open the meeting by saying, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we have a couple amendments for council's consideration. The first one would be under new business under 3.2, and it's the general fund subordinate levies.
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Leslie Lopez. I request that we amend the agenda to add two executive session items. One is a pending litigation under RCW 4230-110-1-A-I for 10 minutes, and then one potential litigation under that same statute for 20 minutes, and there's no after action.
Leslie, I'd just like to verify on this, there is no after action on either of the items that you are adding, is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other amendments?
I think that's all. Thank you.
And are there any objections from council or discussion relative to these additions?
No objections.
Okay, hearing none. We begin with public comment, and this is to be on the agenda items only, and the agenda that is referred to is the one that is before us now. It was posted where we could all see it just a moment ago, and it is, let's see, there are six items before the executive session if anyone wishes to comment.
Chair, we do have somebody online.
Very good.
Caller, please go ahead.
This is Kimberly Goheen Albin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, born in Vancouver, Washington, USA. So you're adding some more amendments and stuff, and I just wondered how the citizens can be prepared for this kind of stuff that happens pretty often. I'll just make that on note, record. On minutes of that you're going to be passing today, November 29th, I noticed that I'm the only one that spoke on the open public comment. So I'm asking citizens of Clark County, Washington, to get aware of, to assemble in as our forefathers said to do. They know something's wrong. You know something's wrong. The public has requested that you publicize better. Obviously, nobody's listening. I think it's, I think you guys should be bothered that there's not public in there. You know, let's be transparent and constitutional. However, that's kind of not the way it's going. From the past few meetings that I've been hearing, you actually kind of poo-poo open public comments. You don't really want to hear from the public. I'm also going to speak on the recovery hotel on your 3.1. So I go to the page, and I printed it off. There's only, there's two, let me see, three pages, and I also scanned today. I want to let everybody know on record that I scanned six pages today referencing what I'm about to say. That, well, as far as recovery hotel, I've called, I've got a full page of stuff, of information and this and that. I don't know how homeless can do it without a cell phone or any help and support and advocacy, but I am my son's advocate. He is Clark County's foster child for mental and behavioral health. He is in trouble and in the system because the state has quashed his life and his family, and we are going to find an end to it. His firstborn child's name is Unity, and Unity is a child. We'll be going to Olympia for that effort as soon as I can get my son well. So I'll just put it on record. I don't see any help through millions and millions of dollars that you pass for mental and behavioral health that reached out to my son. I've spoke and I've written to unelected Kathleen Otto about this, things like with human compassion and real true care about the citizens of Clark County, Washington, of where he was born and raised, that he might get some help. He's a good cause to do so. Also, I want to mention yesterday that I was sent down by, I believe, artificial intelligence on my phone.
Your time has expired, and I turn now to any additional person who wishes to testify.
No, Chair. There is nobody else online.
How about in the hearing room?
I'm sorry, nobody in the hearing room either.
Either. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Either. Thank you.
Old business. The minutes from November 29, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'm up to adopt the minute.
Thank you. Second?
A second, ma'am.
Any discussion, edits, concerns? All those in favor of passage signify by saying aye.
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 Those are, the motion is passed unanimously. And now we turn to the letter of support dealing with Ridgefield I-5 West Connection. Jared, are you going to take the lead on this one?
Jordan Bogie, for the record, council. I am going to be taking the lead on this. Coming out of the council's meeting with Ridgefield last week, I was asked to draft up a letter of support for the project that we could share with our representatives and senators in Olympia. And so based on the information that we received about, you know, the needs in Ridgefield, the presentation that they gave and the information that was provided on some of the traffic and safety and ongoing issues related to this project and why it's needed, I drafted up this letter of support. So would welcome any feedback on the letter or a thumbs up to proceed with sharing this with our legislative delegation and some of the folks on the transportation committees in the House and the Senate.
Think you did an excellent job on the content, and I thank you for that. I do have a question, and that is, to whom it may concern as the opening, should that be more specific in some way? Maybe by one letter to the representatives and senators by name, another to the specific organizations, and somebody who is very familiar with the proper, let me say, secretarial aspect of that? Would you please comment? I don't know for sure how that should go.
That is a great question, Chair. I would be happy to share it with the respective folks in our legislative delegation and entitle the letter individually to each of them. I knew we might be sending this letter around to a few different people, and so that's why I left it as to whom it may concern. But if that's the direction from council, I'd be happy to appropriately introduce the letter to each of our delegation members on the House and the Senate Transportation Committees.
I've even seen it when it would say to the, to our representatives in the House, and then it would list their names in a list rather than an individual letter. So I don't know. Kathleen, do you or someone on staff know how that's to go?
We can certainly say it's to our delegation, local delegation, and list names. That's fine.
Okay. Sounds good. Any, council, any comments on the content?
So I had responded separately to Jordan. I was happy with the letter and thanked him for it and hoping for its widest dissemination and added to our list of things to engage with our legislative council to, our delegation rather, to see if we can help get the legislature to come up with the planning funding that Ridgefield needs. I thought the meeting was great. This is a good outcome from it. We need to do more of this. This came up in RTC as well, that all of the staffs from the different road planning capabilities, from the cities to the county to RTC, need to collaborate more on issues like this that are on the peripheral jurisdictions that impact adjacent jurisdictions. We just don't do enough of it. So I'm in favor of this letter going out. I think it's appropriate.
Very good.
Chair.
Counsel, other comments on the content?
Yes, Chair. First of all, thank you for that. I think that was excellent feedback to put actual names on there. But my question is, did we send this to Ridgefield at all and ask for their feedback on it?
Yes, we sent it to Mayor Lindsay and the city manager as well to see if they had any feedback, and I did not get a response from them.
Okay, great. We'll assume that it fulfills their needs. So yes, I definitely, and can't talk this morning. I am definitely in favor of moving forward with it.
Chair, I'm supportive as well, and thank you, Jordan, for putting this together.
Thank you. I already hear four thumbs up because mine is included too.
Chair, I also support this. I think it's a great letter, and yeah, I think it looks good. Jordan, thank you for working on this. I appreciate it.
Five thumbs up, and let's get that, get that letter out. Thank you, Jordan.
Wonderful. Well done. Thank you, counsel.
Numbers, business, and new business, I'm sorry, 1406 Funding, VHA, and Recovery Hotel.
Great. So Counsel Jordan Bogie, again, I am going to tee this up and then hand it over to representatives from the requesting organizations to answer any questions that you may have. We have $800,000 available in 2024 out of the 1406 Affordable Housing Fund to support development of affordable and supportive housing in the county. And we've received three requests for this funding. Two are from the Vancouver Housing Authority, one for their Weaver Creek Commons Project, and the other for their villages at 78th Street Project. And then we also have another request from Recovery Hotel as well to support renovation and upgrades at their facility. And so you have the three request information sheets in front of you here on the screen. And so just wanted to tee that up and allow them to answer questions that you have about these projects. I believe that, given that there is a little bit less funding than we originally thought that there was for these funds, when Vancouver Housing Authority first put these together, I believe they're going to be prioritizing their Weaver Creek project if there is a choosing between the two. But I'll let them speak to that more.
And do any of those who are covered in this letter wish to speak to it?
All right. Hello. So I am Victor Caesar, Chief Real Estate Officer at the Vancouver Housing Authority, and with me we have Joshua Allinger. He's our Development Manager. So we're happy to answer any questions. I think Josh may have some speaking points. But as noted, we would prioritize Weaver Creek Commons over our 78th Street. We were able to secure some funding from the Washington State Housing Finance Commission for a portion of the acquisition cost at 78th Street.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So because of the misunderstanding on what was available in the account balance, I almost feel like, okay, well, let's take a knee, let's bank this, because it is a relatively small amount. This is one fund that we've pretty much gotten every dollar out into the community every year, and that's great, and that's certainly our intent. I'm just wondering, between those that are seeking this money, if we have a clear understanding of what the priorities would be. And so, I mean, I'm thinking, let's just keep it in the account, and let's take another look at it now that we know the, what the true account balance is that's available to put out in the community. But I just throw that out there.
Are there comments on that or on the letter per se? Yes, go ahead.
I think that, for me, there's still some bits more conversation to be had before we go that direction or not. First of all, I'm trying to kind of understand, so is this a meeting directly correlated to the conversation that we had a week or two ago, or is this something that was scheduled to happen?
This is scheduled. This has nothing to do with ARPA funding. It's 1406.
Okay, all right. And so is anybody here from the other smaller requests that we have, or were they invited to participate, or?
Jordan Bogie again. Yes, so Chris Tobavin was invited, and I believe he was planning to attend. I haven't met him in person, so I'm not sure if he's in the room. It doesn't appear so, but he may be online.
This is Chris Jeff Randall.
So I guess I would like to understand a little bit more of the nature of that request, and then I'd also like to understand the fund balance as a whole and what, what was that?
Chris is on line. Yeah, there he is.
Okay, so just before, before Chris talks, also, just in general, I would like to understand his proposal more. But then maybe after that, I would, I still have some more questions for the VHA and what certain things would mean if we did with.
And just real quick on the funding, I think Jordan said there's $800,000 available in 2024 out of 1406 Funding.
Chris, would you or others like to speak to the question that the counselor had?
I didn't hear the question on this end. Sorry. I didn't know it was addressed. I'm sorry.
Would you please repeat it, Counsel?
Sure. I would just like to have you expound a little bit on the nature of your request and what your needs are, what the implications would be, because I'll be asking the VHA the same thing if the funding were not approved for you this year.
That's a great question. So the, some context to what Lumen Fidelis stood up to be and as a response to. We were contacted, I was contacted by Jeff, who's sitting here with me, on August 20th notifying me that several members of our community living in the hotel of, at 708, 78th Street, would be going homeless as of 1 September. They had a notice to vacate. And between August 20th and August 26th, we couldn't find anybody in the community that was interested or had the capacity to keep the hotel running as a, as a place of shelter and housing for people that needed it. So on August 26th, Lumen Fidelis stood up, created its, the entity. We started what's called Project Safe Haven here in the hotel. We brought in some partners with Restored Revived that can provide us wraparound services when we need it, when we request it. And then we brought in Today's Tomorrow to provide the onsite management. To your question specifically, we are responding to a situation that was, I think, in deterior, in a deteriorated state. We had a lot of maintenance issues when we stepped in, broken windows, doors didn't work. We've been working diligently with the, with no budget effectively, just pulling out of the reoccurring income we have. But there are electrical challenges that we have, plumbing challenges that we have that are immediately necessary. And so the longer that we can't afford to bring those into what I believe is a more modern era of electrical adequacy, then we're going to continue to run the risk of more maintenance issues. Further, it is not necess, it is right now, and by all accounts, right, a dive hotel that was being, that has been used. The people here are really, and I mean this sincerely, really wonderful. We have 61 rooms with only three vacancies, and out of those people, they come from all these different backgrounds, but they, they are cooking in their own rooms, they're cleaning up in their own rooms, and it is not a house or living environment that I believe is necessary. So we believe firmly that we need to be able to create a kitchen environment where people can make food that is not fast food or prepared in a microwave, and they need to have laundry onsite. And those things make for a living environment that can be shared amongst the community. And that, where we are now, to where that is, those funds are essential to getting there. Long answer to your short question. Sorry.
Yeah. So thank you. Oh, sorry, Chair. Just one little final tidbit. So I would like to know what the impact would be of either if you received no funding or partial funding. What would be the impact?
I think, so that, partial funding would be, we would, we would triage, right? So depending on if it's, if it's a dollar, impact would be pretty severe. If you're, we're getting 80 or 90% of what we requested to be less severe. But I think that's, not trying to sidestep, but I just don't know what partial looks like.
Okay, thank you.
That's fair enough.
And so that was my, going to be my same question to the VHA. And so which, you requested the Weaver property, and that is asking for the entirety of the fund that's available, correct?
It would not be the entirety of the fund. I believe it would be whatever is remaining in regards to a balance that's available. I think we would be willing to defer 78th Street and reduce the Weaver Creek request if it meant funding the recovery project.
Okay. And so if we awarded the entirety of what's available, would that be enough for you to complete the project? Is this not what your original request was? Is that correct?
We still have time, so we are hoping to break ground on Weaver Creek January, February of 2025. So we still have other grants that we're pursuing. So this would just, the more funding that we show, it makes our applications look better for other grant opportunities.
Okay. And then, sorry for the many questions. My last one would be, if we, because there are only two, there's VHA and then there's this other one. So if we were to, you know, grant $130,000 to this other organization, how would it impact yours?
We would just continue to search for other outside sources. We have a few other grants that we're looking at in 2024 that we're going to pursue as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yes. Thank you. I have a question. Related to the, the villages, is that the, that's the other request? What, what would, so it sounds like we just don't have funding to fund everything, as worthy as they all are. What is the timing on that? Because that, as well, is a very worthy project. So how would that hold up over time or status?
Yeah, and that one's really early in the process. So we actually just purchased it two weeks ago. And so we are in the process of obtaining a 0% loan, a loan from Washington State Housing Finance Commission that'll cover 75% of the cost. So VHA would just cover the other 25% with our own resources. And the development period for that project is further out. That's like a 2026 project. So that gives us even more time to find money.
How much money do we, does this fund accrue every year approximately?
Jordan Bogie here. My understanding, based on conversations with Mark Gasway, is that the fund accrues about $60,000 to $70,000 a month. It is 0.073-ish percent sales tax that we're getting. It's remitted from the state. And so, so we, it depends on how much sales tax we're pulling in, but something around $60,000 to $70,000 a month.
Great. And then I just have a comment on the Weaver project. I noticed that it's going to be four stories and an elevator, and I just really want to commend you for that because with our aging population, a lot of them, a lot of the buildings are just three stories, no need for an, well, there is a need for an elevator, but there's not a requirement for one, and it consigns people with young children or have mobility issues to that first floor. So thank you very much for going up to the fourth floor there.
Other comments or questions from council?
Was there a staff recommendation at all on this? No? Okay.
What is your request for the, from the council today? Is it for a thumbs up or thumbs down type of response?
So the, a thumbs up to move forward, to put this on a Tuesday council meeting for final consideration for council, and we could add it to next Thursday. Otherwise, we'll have to wait to the beginning of January. Is there a timeframe that you guys have? Like, okay, we might wait until January and put that on the council meeting.
Very good.
So barring any other information coming to us, your request is for this property is $600,000, correct? And so that's well within the $800,000 we have available. I certainly, I think, among all requirements or obstacles out in the community for VHA and others, is the acquisition of property. So this would be the highest priority for me to, within the available budget, to expend on the $600,000 request.
Thank you. That's a strong thumbs up. Are there other thumbs up?
Chair, I would be supportive to move this forward. For me, I think fully funding the, although we'll have our hearing and all of that. But my inclination would to be fully fund Recovery Hotel and then the $600,000 for Weaver.
Okay, thank you. And is there another thumbs up or?
Yeah, Chair, I'm pretty much at the same, but I think I would like to learn a little bit more about the different programs, and so I'll reach out to you offline on that. But yeah, it's definitely interested in moving forward and talking next week or three weeks, whenever that is. Thank you.
Okay. Rather than an offline inquiry, some of the other counselors may be needing the same information, please consider doing it for the, with the council as a whole so that we all get good information on which to proceed. Sounds though like we have.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. And it sounds like we have three strong thumbs up, so let's continue with this in January, as you had stated, Kathleen, and we'll look forward to hearing more about it between now and then. Any other comments before we move on?
I'd just say thanks to everyone. This is hard work, and it's a critical need, so I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you for that. Item 3.2, general fund subordinate levies. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you. So as you remember, just a few hours ago, late yesterday, the council did approve the 1% general fund property tax and the three subordinate levies that are tied to that. The three subordinate levies, just as a reminder, is mental health, developmental disabilities, and veterans assistance. As council discussed, you have an option to choose the flat rate or the proportional rate, and the council decided to apply the flat rate in order to determine the allocation of funding. I just want to make sure, based on some information I had learned late yesterday after that meeting, that council is aware of what that impact is. While it does allocate additional funding to the subordinate levies, the difference between the flat rate and the proportional rate will need to be covered by general fund, and that is just over $1.2 million that we would have to find in general fund to help support those levies with that levy decision. The levy certification needs to be completed by the 15th of this month. We can certainly, you know, continue to move forward as council has directed yesterday. The other option, if council wants, is that we could add this to next Thursday's council meeting for consideration of, you know, if you guys want to vote again. I would recommend during your discussions today not to state how you will vote if the council chooses to move forward to next week with the staff report and a decision. So the only direction I'm asking for, for today, is if council wants to move that forward on December 13th and add this to the agenda or continue the path forward with the current decision. We do have the numbers up, just so that you can, we can pull it up really quick and see it. We do have the treasurer and the assessor's office here also to share or answer any questions. So here's the difference. Here's the flat rate. You can see the proportional rate. These numbers were a little different than yesterday, very small. There is a caveat when we're doing these that they get solidified as. There is a caveat when we're doing these that they get solidified as we get closer to the levy certification. And there's the 1.43 difference. So I will turn it over to council to see if you have any questions or if you just.
Chair?
I'd like, uh, yeah, go ahead, please, counselor.
Okay, so, uh, what's up on the screen and what I have in front of me? I think the addition is off on the flat rate total. Um, I think it's about 2 million dollars off, uh, first of all. Second of all, I, I absolutely intended by my motion and vote to increase these amounts to these organizations. I did not intend to throw any hand grenade on our general fund or, uh, budget process. What I would, before I reconsider my vote, what I would like to know is from these agencies, one, can they use the money? Two, do they have the capacity to spend it? If they don't need the money and they don't have the capacity to spend it, I definitely, uh, would reconsider my vote. Uh, the ancillary issue that I raised with the county manager, uh, was, you know, if we have fund balance policies for each of these funds and then they're not, and this is a general statement, and they're not using the money, if it gets in there, it's building, it's building, it's building. The county should have an ability to claw that back and say, if you're not using the money, uh, we need to alter the revenue flow to you, uh, because it's negatively impacting our general fund and you're not getting it out in the community. So I don't, I, I, I don't know if any research can be done in that area, but, uh, and, and it would apply not just to these funds, but pretty much to all funds. Uh, the county manager needs flexibility, uh, in managing these funds. And, and if it, if they're not being used, uh, then we need to have access to them back. Uh, so anyway, my first, I, I, before I change my mind, uh, at least, or change my vote, I want to know from these fund managers whether they can, um, if they have the capacity and have the need. The only one I have experience with at all, uh, is regarding veterans assistance. And I have heard them ask for, um, more of a budget over the years. I've been in those meetings where they have brought it up, hey, we could really use some more budget. And, and I, you know, Michael Torres is, uh, assiduously, uh, assisting in, um, that organization. But I don't know about the others from developmental disabilities to behavioral health. But again, I intended these additional amounts.
We are not asking for your vote or anyone else's vote on this today. Uh, but, uh, simply to decide whether or not to put this as an agenda item for this upcoming special council meeting. And I would give a thumbs up to that, to add the levy certification as an agenda item for the meeting on the 13th.
Chair?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, uh, this is Leslie Lopez, I just wanted to just make a comment about procedure. Um, because this would be putting this on an agenda item, my suggestion is that, um, someone would make a motion to put that on that agenda for this special meeting on December 13th, and then we can go through that process.
I will, so, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and then I'd like to make a comment.
Please do.
Okay, I, I would, uh, I, I think this is more complex than we're aware. And I know Mark is in the room and I think, I think there's restrictions on how we can use some of these funds, what it can be used for. I'd like to better understand that today, but I, I would like to move it forward for reconsideration. We could hear from Mark.
Chair, I have just a couple of quick comments as well.
Uh, let's hear if Mark has something to say first and then you're next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that request, I missed that request somehow. My apologies.
No problem.
No worries.
Uh, Mark Gasway, Clark County Finance Director, I just want to provide a little bit of information about the funds. Um, first of all, the 1019 Fund, the Veterans Fund that you were referring to, Councilor Medjewee. Um, the current fund balance in that fund is, uh, almost 750,000 dollars, which is almost a full year's worth of their budget, their annual budget's about 850,000 dollars. In the 952 Fund, the Mental Health Fund, there's 10,756 dollars, uh, 10,756,706. So that's the current fund balance in the Mental Health Fund. And then in the Developmental Disability Fund, the, the balance is 2,092,426. So there's significant fund balances already in these funds. And as was mentioned earlier, there's significant restrictions on how these funds can be used. For example, this portion of the, the Veterans Fund can only used for indigent veterans. And so they have to go through a qualification process. And then they're limited on the amount of funding the individual veterans can receive. So, for example, there, if they were to apply for a housing voucher, they're limited in to a certain number of months, like one month or possibly two months a year for that single individual. So they're very restricted, whereas other types of funding, for example, general fund that could be applied can be used for, um, multiple programs. Um, so by placing it in these funds, it places additional restrictions on how those, how those funds can be used. And, and it's equally the same for the developmental disabilities and the mental health. It, it further restricts what can be done with that funding, so.
And that's according to state law?
Exactly.
Right, um, and that if we wanted to provide more funding that is flexible, general fund might be the way to go because otherwise this takes general fund and restricts it further, so.
Exactly, um, a similar situation, if you wanted to use, um, again, just as an example, uh, if the veterans wanted to use, uh, provide more mental health services, a fund that might be more applicable to that would be the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund because it's specifically designed for those things. Whereas this particular smaller fund doesn't fit those parameters. So there's other options and flexibility in how those can be used.
Yeah, Chair?
Counselor Young, I think was next.
Yes, thank you. So I, I would support bringing it back forward for, for reconsideration. Um, but I would like to have even a little bit more in-depth information provided. I would like to understand how that, how, exactly how the restrictions are on it. And I also would like to, um, better understand the need of the Veterans Assistance Center in some way or another, I don't know how that would be formulated. And I think my, I think, and I can't speak for the entire council, but I think there was a, a lot of intention with supporting the, the Veterans Assistance Center in our decision yesterday. And I, the other thing I'd like to understand is I would like to hear from Michael or whoever it is on the fund balances in those other funds and what's limiting the usage, whether they could use that some more or not. The thing that I wouldn't want to have happen is if we did, if we did ultimately decide to go backwards is to have this conversation kind of die off. And, because I do want to make sure that the Veterans Assistance Center has the tools that they need to be productive.
Thank you, are there comments from council?
Chair, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I too would like to see the historical data, but I am supportive of also moving this to the agenda for next week as well.
Thank you, as am I. And, um, because of that vote and its inextricable relationship to the general fund, I will also move to change my vote on that 1% levy, not, uh, with surprise that there is a one and a half million dollar, uh, connection there as to how they're interwoven. And I'll be looking between now and then to Leslie for, uh, how she would see the, uh, legality of the wording on that approach. And are there other comments from the council?
I have another question for Mark.
Go ahead.
So the Behavioral Health Fund, I want to focus on that. How much did you said was the fund balance?
The B, the mental health, the mental health.
I'm looking at behavioral health. I don't see mental health listed there.
Okay, it's the, I have it, we have it listed as mental health, 10,756,706.
Okay, so it's, it's normal for like the Veterans Assistance Fund to have a year balance. Some funds have two-year balance, but the, the behavioral health or mental health, I just want to clarify, is that this a different fund than the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund? Okay, so we have a pro, we have a dire need out in the community for mental health, whether it's at the jail or out in the community. And the problem isn't with the money that we're allocating, it's that we're not getting it out into the community. We, we don't have the capacity or, um, we're not doing enough to get that capacity out into the community. So, having, for behavioral health, I, I mean, I'd like to know more about that. Well, how did we get 10 million dollars into that fund? I mean, that's the real issue. And then once you know how to satisfy that issue, it may be, okay, we don't need that much money out in the community for behavioral health or mental health. I would, I can't believe that because we have an opioid crisis, we have people dying of overdoses every day in this state. Uh, we just had a murder-suicide of five, a family, five people. Uh, there's dire need out there. So, I mean, that's where the policy, um, decisions need to, what, what's going on here? Why, why is this money and we're not using it?
And this sounds like a.
Who's in charge of, who's in charge of?
This sounds like a good discussion for our council meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, I think we need to, Chair, thank you. We need to have these issues characterized so we know what we want to deal with when we bring it back. Who, who manages the behavioral health right now?
Those, both of those funds are managed by our community services groups as well as the veterans. I mean, all of these are managed through veterans.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just also make one comment on your?
Please.
Um, typically in an operating fund, a fund where we're able to predict revenues and expenses like these, um, our fund balance is usually about 60 days or two months because then we can handle the cash flow aspects of those. Uh, unless there's another reason, um, and again, the more complicated the fund, the, the more parameters we put around fund balance. But typically in an operating fund like these, we would have about two months' worth of fund balance. And it's primarily for cash flow purposes. Some funds, what we try and do is have some guarantee funding, um, for, uh, programs that will continue into the future. And so we want to make sure that we have that, um, available. And those are primarily associated with, with sales tax, because sales tax is a little more unpredictable than, these are property tax. So it's a very reliable, predictable revenue stream. And so in, in funds like these, having a 12-month fund balances, I would consider excessive.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one more question. I just want to be clear on what we're reconsidering, uh, because I believe you mentioned something about the 1%. And I, as I understand, we'd be looking at whether or not we're doing the flat rate or the proportional rate, but we wouldn't be reconsidering the 1% or really the entire budget, is that correct?
The motion, we're voting on the motion, which is to add the levy certification as an agenda item for the special council meeting on the 13th period, that's it.
But that is a good point, because we have all this money we're collecting. You just raised taxes again and we're not spending the taxes that you've already collected.
Chair, this is Leslie Lopez, if I might. I just want to talk procedurally, um, I know that we've been using word, um, emotion to reconsider. Just to make it clear, pursuant to Robert's rules, it would not be a motion to reconsider because that needs to be taken at the same time as the meeting that the action is taking place. Um, for instance, if yesterday, that hearing had been continued to today, you could do that. But yesterday's hearing ended when the budget was approved and then, um, that hearing was adjourned. Thank you, I can't think of the word. Um, so in order, according to Robert's rules, for the council to now look at that issue, if they decide to go forward next week, it would be, under Robert's rules, either a motion to rescind or a motion to amend to change that decision. And I can certainly provide that information to council, um, before next week. But just wanted to make sure that, you know, for the wording, that we know that it's not a motion to reconsider.
Thank you, and whether it is a rescind or re, um, or amend the, amend whatever, however you worded it the second time, uh, it, it is still amounting to, um, considering the levy certification as an agenda item. So that is, as I see it, consistent with the motion that is before us. So are you ready to vote on the motion before us?
Chair, I, I suppose I would like some more clarification because I am not interested in, in addressing the, the 1%. The only thing I'm interested is exactly what is on the screen, which is the sub levy.
The 1% that I mentioned, I'm sorry, the 1% that I mentioned is because of my own vote of realizing the, uh, inextricable relationship between, uh, the difference of a flat rate and a proportional rate on the general fund, about one and a half million, and how that relates to the 1% levy on my vote. I, that is not something that is, uh, consideration that I was even suggesting for the council as a whole, although you certainly could if you wished. So, um, are you ready to vote on the, uh, overall, uh, motion that is before us, which is simply to add the levy certification as an agenda item for the special council meeting on the 13th?
Yes, please.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Point of clarification, I, I, I'm still not understanding what this motion is. When we say to reopen this levy certification, does that reopen the issue of the 1%? I.
That is a separate matter.
Yes, it's just the subordinate levies. The 1% is part of what's been adopted in the budget. The budget needs to be adopted by Friday, so we cannot be reopening that.
All right, thank you.
It's the distribution of the approved budget.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I am ready at this point then.
Uh, we already have two yays, is, let's, uh, start again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed, so we will have that on our special council meeting on the 13th. Counselor reports, are there any?
I have one.
Go ahead, please.
So we had our, um, what was my last chairing of the RTC meeting last night after our lengthy budget hearing? Um, and I, I did very much want to state a couple of things. And first and foremost, Michelle Belkot had asked a question of, of Ron ARP, or Transportation Alliance. And it's on the issue of, of the other corridor planning and, uh, the fact that they did finally bold at least, uh, some issue with corridor planning, uh, but her question was well-received. Uh, I also tagged some comments on there because Congresswoman's aide was in it, in the audience as well. And I'm hoping for some federal intervention to give some leadership to both, uh, Washington and Oregon on what is a strategic corridor, the I-5 corridor from Mexico to Canada. We're not going to be able to get there. But the point is, um, the response was very well thought out and highlighted the fact that, yes, come, come plan updates are now hitting the area. We need to plan for additional corridors. This is coming from the Transportation Alliance. Uh, the problem is that no one's doing it. And so someone has to do it. Uh, and it needs to start here and we need to get the RTC because they have all the relevant stakeholders for the region, uh, at that, uh, planning, um, board. So I appreciated Counselor Belkot's question, uh, and I appreciated the responsiveness and highlighting by the Transportation Alliance that, yes, this is a significant issue, we need to address it. And we did get some positive response from the RTC CEO as well, uh, to put it on the agenda, see what we can do to move it forward, um, at the RTC. agenda, see what we can do to move it forward at the RTC. So anyway, I, I thought it was an important discourse, important part of the, of the meeting. And so, Michelle, thank you for the, your participation yesterday.
Thank you. Other counselor, Vic Hartz?
Chair, just in, in response to that, could we could get something put on our agenda to kind of continue that discussion a little bit? Because I, I hate when things are brought up and then they just die. So I don't know, is there any way that staff could bring that to us for a short period of time to discuss that?
If this is being discussed at RTC, usually council who's representing the different groups are the ones that bring back the information to the council.
Right. To know, I was more about the topic of our growth plan, you know, the comp plan update, and getting that into the comp plan update.
The third corridor, we're getting the third corridor into the comp plan update?
Correct.
I see, okay.
And we have had that discussion. I'm sorry that Oliver has left the room, because I am, great point, Glenn, I don't know where we're at with our own planning, because we have discussed it at previous council meetings, and we did have three thumbs up to ensure that we were moving in that direction. So I don't know where-
I can follow up with Oliver. I do know, gosh, it's been a while, probably last year when the council did get that direction, we came back with the staff report for assistance with it, because it's not just the county, right? We're hitting federal, state, other jurisdictions. And due to the cost of hiring out and not having support from the other jurisdictions, it didn't go forward. But as part of the comp plan update, I'll talk, I can talk to Oliver and make sure, and that was council's decision on the, the funding piece. But I can certainly talk to Oliver and see where in the process that would fit in, because I want to be mindful that they have a very detailed, specific process that we have to follow by law, but understanding that council wants to have this in there, so to put it into the right place, so that we're not duplicating efforts, I can talk to him.
Great, thank you. And then also, would you be, would, could staff maybe provide the CVTV link to that, that meeting? That would be helpful for some context.
About the discussion a year and a half ago?
Yeah.
That's going to take a little time, because I'm going to have to go back and watch them all to find it.
There's no way of scouring through our minutes, or?
If that's, I will do my best to find it for you timely.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a little update.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, you bet. The School Advisory Committee met last week. We meet twice a year. This was my first meeting. I had the opportunity to chair. It was a productive meeting. Oliver and Jenna gave a great update on what's going on with the comp plan update related to climate change and affordable housing components. So there was interest in that. We chatted just a wee bit about legislation, and it seemed like the main issue that came up was concern about the supermajority, 60% threshold for passage of bonds. And I know that in particular Battleground and Ridgefield school districts are struggling with the increase in residential development that's occurring, and have had difficulty. They have property purchased, but difficulty passing bonds, so that will be something. It's been looked at before, but they'll be looking at it again. So I think that's an important legislative issue for us to keep in mind.
And that's an issue to keep plugging away with, because who constitutes that 60% changes when the population is changing so rapidly and growing so rapidly? So it's, it is a challenging, a challenging point for those, those communities, for sure.
Right. It is challenging, and I think unfortunately, voters could be dissatisfied with some decisions related to development, but, and they, they can end up taking it out on local school bonds or the fire districts. So we've got, we've got to make sure as we grow, every, everything moves forward in a positive way.
Well, one of the things that was mentioned by Jordan in the letter that we did with Ridgefield is that Ridgefield is the state's fastest-growing city since 2010. So that gives a context to it that's pretty robust there. Other counselor reports?
Chair, I have a comment. I just want to thank Counselor Marshful for stepping in, and when I got ill for that meeting, so I appreciate that. And thanks, Counselor Medjewie, for the, the comments for the Third Bridge. Counselor Young, I think that's absolutely a great idea to mention that in the Third Corridor, in the, in the GMA, because one of the things that Mr. ARP mentioned yesterday was, we didn't specifically call the Third Corridor out, because it's not something that could probably happen for 30 to 50 years, but we need a Third Corridor. So if you just don't include it at all, it's just going to continue to be left out forever and ever and ever. And I've lived in a lot of other cities where there was many more bridges, not just two options. We need to be always looking ahead in the future and, and planning, because this is, this is not working. And obviously, we all know, our population is significantly growing and has grown, so we really need to plan and forecast for this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there work session requests?
None today.
Any, anything at all?
No work session request today.
Policy updates.
This is Jordan Bogey. Couple of policy updates for you today, councilors. So the first is that I am meeting with our lobbyists, Josh and Annika, tomorrow to put together an agenda for our meeting next week with legislative delegation, so I will have more information for that forthcoming, but just wanted to let you know that we'll be teeing that up. And then the second thing that I have for you, that I will also be sending some more information about, we just got an email, I think, like, an hour, hour and a half ago from the City of Battleground, and they are asking for a letter of support. They are going to be making a capital budget request in this legislative session related to Battleground Healthcare, and they are requesting $400,000 to be used by Battleground Healthcare to complete acquisition of their clinic in Battleground. And Battleground Healthcare Clinic provides free healthcare to adults who either lack sufficient medical coverage or are below 300% of the federal poverty level for Southwest Washington. And they served more than 2,000 patients in 2022. So I will share some more details of that request, as well as the full letter with you, since I just received it, but that, just to let you know that that's going to be coming forward to you.
So I do have a question, Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So unless it's a different entity, I believe that came up for our community grants, nonprofits from ARPA funds, either this last session or the session before, and that we significantly funded it. So I, I may be mistaken about which facility they're talking about, but I would want to know if we have already allocated money against it, and it's still not enough. Because I, my recollection was the money that we were allocating was going to complete the funding package. So I, I may be mistaken, it may be a different organization, but I would want to know that.
Thanks, counselor. I will-
I would support it, I would support a letter, but I'm curious.
I'll follow up and see what, what was approved by council previously, and how this relates to that funding.
Good question. Thank you for bringing that up. I am familiar with the organization, not with its funding, and I will say that they do a marvelous job, and particularly with the clientele that they serve. It's just an, an amazing service to the community of Battleground, so. Other policy updates, Jordan, or anyone else?
I would just like to comment that I'd be supportive of a letter of support for the Battleground, and I do believe it was the same organization. I know they had other funding pending, so an update on the status of all of that, and how much we contributed, because I do think it was a significant amount. And do we know who of our delegation will be joining us for that meeting?
I have not gotten a final update on the roster, but I'll see if I can get that tomorrow when I meet with Josh and Annika.
Great, thanks.
Any additional policy updates? Okay, we're going to turn to two executive sessions. One of them is 10 minutes, potential litigation. Another is 20 minutes, same thing, potential litigation. And in the case of both, there is no after action. So it is now-
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. The first item, or the one that's for 10 minutes, that is actually pending litigation. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. We'll change that to pending litigation. It is currently 2:01. We have about 30 minutes of action here in executive session, so let's resume at 14:35. And back here at this site. 2:35, thank you very much. See you then.
Chair Berman has asked us to announce that the executive session is going to be extended for an additional 10 minutes, and open session is expected to reconvene at 2:45. Thank you.
Chair Berman has asked us to announce that executive session will be extended for an additional 10 minutes, and open session will reconvene at 2:55. Thank you.
The Chair has asked us to announce that the executive session is going to be extended for an additional five minutes, and we plan to be back here at about 3:00, 3:00 p.m.
So it's, we extended a couple times. We're back from our executive session. There is no action to take at this meeting, so we are called to adjourn.